Good evening, I'd like to call the new City of Manassas Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone else is dinging, it's not me. Okay. First item is the...oh, no, we have to do the Oath of Office, please. If we could have the four new Aldermen, please join Clerk Aliazi in the center. Be careful, the courts.
Please, our right hand, repeat after me. Aye, State Member.
Aye.
Having been elected to the position of...
Having been elected to the position of District 1.
The City of Manassas.
Of the City of Manassas.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially...
And will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I need you to sign.
There's some kind. I think you should have asked for a better chair, Arnie, since you're the senior Alderman now at this point, and you're not the newbie. You're not the newbie, though, either. We will, as soon as Debbie sits down. If we could have the roll.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
So the next item on the agenda is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one, the city attorney has a video at this point, if it works.
And this is from...the video is from CivMec. It's called "In the Scope of Your Authority: Preventing Public Officials' Liability." And the mayor, excuse me, was just asking me if he could put it off to a different date, but there's a whole list of communities that are waiting for it. I just happen to be first on the list, so they'll be...we have to quick-ship it back off tomorrow.
In the meantime, we do have the communications to receive at this point. Do we have a motion to do so? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Benner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion...oh, let's see. To receive communications A, B, and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zalinski.
On Communication B, the Hecla...Hecla Board of Directors change in bylaws. So is this as being stated, we'll no longer have an Alderman as a representative from this council to the Hecla Committee?
The committee decided on their own that they did not wish to have the mayor appoint a Alderman anymore, and they changed that without our knowledge. So I included that in there for your information. It's not something that I feel is in the best interest of the city or in the best interest of our relationship with Hecla. And I did let Director Kating know that, but the board did choose to go that direction, so if you wish...
And we have no say in that whatsoever?
We do not. You could contact the board, though, if you feel the same way as I do.
Could I ask Alderman Collier what he thought about the situation? Because I see he's agreed to serve through your elected board position.
Okay, first of all, I have my poems. They were having trouble getting people. They decided that instead of going to a one-year term, they wanted people to commit for three years. They canvassed the community. They had X number of people put in petitions. They went through a canvassing deal. And I told them, hey, by the way, seeing I'm on, I would commit to a three-year committee so that at least I know we'd have some representation for a while. I'm looking down the road, I think about every two years, one or two people might fall off, so we might have a chance because there'll be submitted people that want to be interested, go on for a three-year term, and that's what... There was no consistency. They said, "The Park and Recs Department has never been there, and the previous Alderman never showed up." And that's why I got ousted, although I was attending meetings. And then I was lucky enough to get on the Board of Directors for the next three years. And that's where that's at today.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Benner?
I'd like to ask Alderman Collier, being on the board, if he was able to have a vote in that decision.
Yes, and it wasn't a successful vote. They had 12 people there that meeting. They passed it...they passed the resolution or bylaws that they changed, and that's how it happened. It's just the simplest...one year you've got something happening good here, and next year it might change, next year it might change. Well, they wanted to change because they felt there was no representation from the city, meaning the previous Aldermen on the committees were never showing up at their... Or the Park and Rec Department was never showing up there. So they just figured, they didn't need me or anybody else at that time. As far as corresponding, the mayor or anybody else, I assumed that they were going to do something, and I was lucky enough to get back on for three years. I don't make every means, but I make some.
There is no further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the communications?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Attorney Captain?
Oh, hello, Dan. Congratulations on being elected as a council member.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm real excited about attending my first meeting and being sworn in, although I'm a little nervous.
Nervous? About what? You were elected by a landslide.
Well, there are several things I'd like to accomplish. Probably the first to admit, I have a lot to learn. I don't want to end up like former Councilman Smith. I want to have a successful term, but I don't want to end up being sued.
Hi, Dan, glad to be joining us tonight.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, I'm Margaret Taylor. I've been a council member here with the City of Cottonwood for 10 years, and mayor for the last two. During my time with the city, we have made a lot of progress, but also a few mistakes. Certain members of the council have created messy liability situations that have cost the city a great deal of money, hurt her public image, and stalled important projects. And in some situations, elected officials have paid personal liability claims out of their own pockets. The purpose of this video and accompanying handbook is to help you avoid the mistakes that can lead to liability and identify best practices that will allow you to be successful as an elected or appointed official. Sursa presents "In the Scope of Your Authority: Preventing Public Officials' Liability."
That's a lot of good information. Well, thanks, Bill. I'll see you tonight. Oh, Mayor, do you have a few minutes to discuss some of those past mistakes?
Sure, Dan, come on in. Have a seat.
Thank you.
You referred to Councilmember Patrick Smith. He promised during his campaign he would never allow Megamart to build a store in Cottonwood, and he was pretty vocal about it.
Stay away, Megamart! Stay away, Megamart!
I've had similar opinions about giant retailers, although I haven't been as vocal as Mr. Smith. Where'd he go wrong?
Well, I don't think he ever accepted the fact that as an individual council member, he really didn't have the authority to act on his own. That's why Smith was never able to get anything done. He was pretty vocal about the few issues he was interested in, but rarely worked to build consensus within the council. Dan, pretty much everything we do requires collaboration within the framework of our council. Elected officials can't get anything done as individuals.
I see your point.
So the first lesson is to think and act in terms of "we," not "I." Apart from a few duties vested in the mayor, the laws that govern our city don't give any powers to individual council members. We've got a diverse council with a lot of different perspectives, and we can only accomplish our goals by working together. Now that you've been elected, your role changes dramatically. You're no longer an outsider promoting your own agenda. You now have to work with your fellow council members to accomplish the city's goals as a collective body.
Let me ask you more about Councilmember Smith. The Megamart deal, it was approved by the council, although by a close vote. What problems did Smith cause?
Remember all of his anti-Megamart statements? When it came time for us to actually hear and act on Megamart's land use application, he should have accused himself.
Hmm, so he shouldn't have voted?
That's right. He shouldn't have participated in the hearing or voted. Smith had made it well-known that he was aligned with the Megamart opponents. When we're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, such as when deciding on a land use application or liquor license, we must be fair and impartial. We can't do that if we've already made up our minds before the hearing. Councilmember Smith had made it clear that he opposed the Megamart application. He was not acting as a fair and impartial decision-maker. Fortunately, the Megamart application was approved by a small margin. Otherwise, the city could have been accused of a due process violation.
Due process?
Yes, the U.S. Constitution guarantees the right to a fair hearing as part of an applicant's due process rights.
During my campaign, I talked with a lot of my neighbors who are also anti-growth. I expressed to them my concerns about protecting our small businesses from giant retailers. Will that prevent me from voting on similar issues?
Well, the question is, if one of those big retailers comes before the council with a land use application, can you be fair? Can you make your decision based only on the evidence you hear and the requirements of our land use code? And can you set aside your previous discussions with your neighbors?
I can't ignore my neighbors. They elected me to represent them, not ignore them.
I'm not saying ignore your neighbors. But when an application is pending, you should not have discussions with anyone outside of the hearing. Our city attorney calls these discussions "ex parte contacts." Your decision in a quasi-judicial matter must be based on the evidence presented. So when your neighbors want to speak with you about a pending application, explain to them it's inappropriate for you to talk about the issue outside the hearing. Suggest that they come to the hearing so their concerns can be heard.
Well, last year, I called Councilman Miller and asked him to vote no on the pit bull ordinance. Did we engage in an improper ex parte contact?
No, that was a different situation. The council's consideration of a pit bull ordinance was a legislative matter. They were not dealing with the rights of a specific applicant under an existing law. The council was considering a new citywide law, so they were acting as legislators. Lobbying and other ex parte contacts are acceptable in the legislative context. But when you're in a quasi-judicial role, you've got to think and act more like a judge and refrain from engaging in or allowing ex parte contacts.
It makes sense when you put it that way. It's important not to base my vote on my biases or prejudice and only consider the evidence presented at the hearing, like a judge.
Exactly. The other thing to keep in mind is to make sure you have no conflicts of interest when you're voting. If you were appearing before a judge and you learned he had financial or other conflicts of interest, you'd expect him to recuse himself, wouldn't you?
Well, sure.
Well, people who appear before us in a quasi-judicial matter expect the same. To be unbiased decision-makers, we must be free from conflicts of interest. If we do have a conflict, we need to declare it, recuse ourselves, and not participate in the hearing or decision.
I think I understand. I think I recall reading in the paper about another incident involving Patrick Smith.
Oh, that was probably the lawsuit involving our library expansion. The council had selected a very qualified contractor to manage the project. Smith was always hanging around the construction site, thinking it was his job to micromanage the project. Needless to say, Smith ended up in a verbal confrontation with the contractor. Things got personal, and Smith started talking to other council members about terminating the guy's contract. He also spread some vicious, personal rumors around town about the contractor.
That wasn't very smart. Did he get the contractor fired?
No, but the contractor sued Smith personally for defamation. Our insurance company declined to defend Smith because it was alleged he was acting outside the scope of his authorized duties and acting in a willful and wanton manner.
So that's why Smith had to pay for his own legal defense?
Yes, he was not acting within the scope of his authority as a council member when he started those vicious rumors.
I heard he had to take out a second mortgage to pay his lawyers and a large settlement.
Smith learned his lesson the hard way. Being outside the scope of one's authority or acting in a willful and wanton manner will result in a loss of liability protections and insurance coverages. That's good, thank you. Now, Patrick Smith isn't the only elected official who's gotten himself in some trouble. Our former mayor, Joe Appleby, put himself in the middle of a personnel issue.
I think I remember this case. Tammy Williams was the director of Public Works, right? Didn't she try to stop sexual harassment in the street division?
What do you think about wearing something like that to work?
Jerks, idiots!
Guys, I've told you about this before. You can't keep doing this. Bert, I need to see you in my office.
In trying to clean up the division, she fired the street supervisor, Bert Simpson. Mayor Appleby, who was drinking buddies with Simpson, was furious and made it his mission to get Tammy fired, and he succeeded.
You know, your job can't be replaced.
She brought a lawsuit claiming the mayor retaliated against her for trying to eliminate the harassment. The jury awarded her $150,000 in punitive damages that Appleby had to pay out of his own pocket.
Wow. What were the key lessons in this case?
First, don't act on the basis of personal motives. It was obvious Mayor Appleby wanted to fire Tammy Williams to get revenge for his friend Bert, and that was not in the scope of his authority. Second, we need to delegate personnel issues to the city administration. The council shouldn't be dealing with individual employees other than those who report directly to the council, like our city administrator. We should be focusing on the major legislative and quasi-judicial issues and leave administrative matters to staff. And third, never retaliate against someone for exercising their legal rights. Not only is retaliation against the law, but these claims are among the most difficult and costly to defend. We also had another fallout from the Appleby litigation. The press learned during the trial that Appleby was telling a lot of inappropriate jokes, and he was emailing them to the entire council. So the media demanded to see all of the council's emails over several years. Our study sure looked bad after the press got a hold of those.
Well, I didn't realize emails were considered public record.
Sure. While they're narrow grounds for not releasing them under some circumstances, the basic rule is that emails may be public documents that anyone can review. If you don't want something splashed on the front page of the newspaper, we need to keep it out of our emails.
At least we're not the only city making these mistakes. Remember the scandal involving Councilman Arnold over in Clarksville after he got stopped for speeding?
Yes, he was caught on television yelling at the police officer for stopping him. I cringe when he shouted at the officer. "Don't you know who I am?" Talk about an abuse of power. And that brings me to perhaps the most important lesson. As elected and appointed officials, we must use our powers wisely and with civility. To misuse our position is absolutely improper and is not within the scope of our authority. We shouldn't try to put ourselves above the law or try to get some sort of special privilege because of our position.
Explain what you mean by "acting with civility."
Well, as elected officials, we're perceived as holding the most powerful positions in the city. Because of that perception, our words carry a lot of weight. A harsh or ill-considered comment from any of us, especially if made public, can be extremely harmful to our employees' morale as well as our public image. I once heard Appleby refer to our female employees as "the staff hotties." It was embarrassing. Also, we should not participate in or encourage staff bashing in public meetings. We need to keep the focus on issues, not personalities. And then during Tammy's lawsuit, some of the jokes the mayor told during executive sessions were made public. We took another bashing in the press for those. Negative behavior like that can affect our entire organization. If we set a bad example at the top, we can't be surprised when it filters through the entire workforce. I'm so glad we've moved on from those days.
This is eye-opening and a little frightening. Do we have any protections from liability?
Yes. Fortunately, we live in a state where our liability protections are strong. For one thing, we have an excellent governmental immunity act. Our Public Officials' Liability Handbook has a good summary of our liability protections. But to retain these protections, we must stay within the scope of our authority and not act in a willful and wanton manner.
You've used those terms before. What would be considered willful and wanton?
Well, the actual legal definition is found in the handbook, but basically, it's the kind of conduct that got Appleby in trouble. When he got Tammy fired, he was more than reckless in disregarding her legal rights, purposely trying to damage her career.
Do we have any other protections?
Sure, we have excellent personal immunities, recognized by our courts when acting on legislative and quasi-judicial matters. But we do not have strong immunities when dealing with administrative problems. That's another reason why we need to stay out of administrative issues.
Got it. Let the city manager do his job.
And finally, we've got good insurance coverage. But that coverage only applies when we act within the scope of our authorized responsibilities and does not apply to punitive damages, as Mayor Appleby learned.
I see how these are all interrelated. Best practices, liability protections, and insurance coverages. And each area calls for us to meet certain standards of conduct. As long as we meet those standards of conduct, we should be okay.
I think you've got it, Dan.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate you taking the time to share your knowledge so I don't have to learn the hard way. Thanks for your insights.
You're very welcome. And one of the other best practices we've put into place is liability training. We hold a session every year for our council members, boards, and commissions. We have a session scheduled next month.
Great, I'll be there. Great. Thanks again.
Does anyone have any questions for the attorney? I'm not sure what happened here that it's echoing, but... So, Item L is...how is that loud? Is ordinances and resolutions? Do we have a motion for either of the resolutions at this point? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for Resolution R...R-10-17, a resolution providing with a method of selecting certain council committee officials.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Just to be clear, Item Number 2 was the motion put forward?
I believe...yes, Resolution 10, correct. Alderman Taylor? I believe so. So we have two resolutions here. One that's...one that calls for nominations to be by...
Mayor, we're not asking for an explanation.
I just got a question from someone else on the council. There's two motions here and two resolutions. One that states the city clerk shall pass out ballots for written votes, and the other that says the clerk shall call roll call for the votes for officers. And you made the motion for Resolution 10, which is the one that the clerk shall pass out ballots. Is that what your question was, Alderman Nichols?
My question was, did Alderman Taylor make the motion for Item Number 2 under ordinances and resolutions?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
And then it was Alderman Benner, I think, that asked the question. And then there was a second by Alderman Collier. Would you have anything else, Alderman Nichols?
Well, I would like to add that Item Number 1 was a resolution that I put forward, which also deals with the same topic. The difference being that I brought it forward in the interest of transparency and conducting our council business out in the open. It did provide...it does provide for a method to deal with a tie, so we don't go...we wouldn't have the opportunity of going 189 rounds like we did a few years ago. So... Yes.
You could make a motion to amend Resolution 10 if you so desired.
Oh, I didn't know.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask you to repeat what you just said?
I said that she could make an amendment to amend Resolution 10 if she so desired.
Just one moment here. I would like to amend Resolution 10 to say...to strike Item Number 3 and replace it with... A roll call shall be immediate, and any candidate receiving the least votes shall be eliminated until there was one remaining who shall win the election.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols, did you...
Sorry.
Wasn't sure. Is there any discussion? So there's a motion and a second to amend Resolution 10, as Alderman Nichols stated. Alderman Sevenick?
So basically, what we're doing is if we pass this amendment, we're basically passing our 917.
Yes. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call on the amendment, please?
Will she carry on roll call 62?
So now we're looking at the... So now we're looking at the resolution as amended? Do we have discussion on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, could we have a roll call on the resolution as amended? Did you have questions?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So what the amendment did was replace item three, which said, should there be more than one nominee for any office, the city clerk shall pass out ballots, with item three from Resolution 9 that says, should there be more than one nomination for any office, roll call shall be immediate, and any candidate... So basically, the amended resolution is the same as Resolution 9. That's what the amendment would say, yes. That it would be by roll call vote. That's what you're voting on now. So you want to clear the... And we'll start over. Was there any other discussion or questions? So we cleared it, and if you could... Revote, please.
Will she carry it on roll call 6-2?
Okay. Item two is moot at this point because we did item one. I mean, item one is moot because we did item two. So we'll move on to M appointments. The first appointment is the council appointment of the council president. Do we have any nominations for council president? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to... For council president, Stan Sevenek. Alderman Stan Sevenek.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second for Alderman Sevenek to be the council president. Are there any other nominations? Alderman Collier?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Benner.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second for Alderman Benner. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? We have two nominations on the floor, one for Alderman Sevenek and one for Alderman Benner. I don't think there's discussion on this, correct? Okay. So the clerk will call the roll at this time, and you would either state Alderman Benner or Alderman... Actually, it would be Alderman Sevenek or Alderman Benner, in the order that they were. Up to three rounds if we have a tie. Hopefully, we don't have a tie.
Alderman Nichols.
Alderman Benner.
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Sevenek.
Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Collier. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Grady. Alderman Benner.
I think you should vote for Alderman Sevenek, so you're on that side now, right?
Do I get it?
Did you want to vote, Kevin?
I thought I did.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So I would ask the clerk to cast the ballot for the council president being Alderman Sevenek. Congratulations, Alderman Sevenek. Item B is an alderman member to the plan commission. Do we have any nominations? Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Arnie Collier.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations? Alderman Nichols?
I'll nominate Alderman Benner.
There's a motion and a second for Alderman Benner. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Just for the people on the public, I have to ask three times. I'm not crazy or anything, although some of you may think I am. We have two nominations, Alderman Collier and Alderman Benner. Will take the roll. We should probably start with the second person this time around.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek.
Alderman Benner.
Alderman Collier. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Grady. Alderman Benner. Alderman Nichols.
Congratulations, Alderman Benner. Item C is an alternate member to the plan commission. Do we have any nominations for the alternate member to the plan commission? Alderman Benner?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Zalinski.
There's a motion and a second for Alderman Zalinski. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I'll ask the clerk to cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Zalinski. Hopefully, you'll get to come a few more times this time around. I think you've been there twice, maybe. Congratulations. At this time, we will recess to committees. The city clerk will call the first election. Well, she won't do the vice chair. And then whoever is elected chair will move on to run the election for the next portion. Did you have cheat sheets, Debbie, for everyone? So the clerk has cheat sheets if you are elected chair of the committee.